The biggest worry is.
Sorry, forgot to start that.
You're in a residential zone, so it is they're correct about, you know, the neighbors and everything else. So just have to respect everybody. Good luck.
Anyone else either in person or on Zoom? Okay, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this transfer of the liquor license? In person? On Zoom? Okay. Anything more that you'd like to know, ask, answer?
Nope.
And entertain a motion then to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close this hearing.
I'll second the motion. Roll call vote. Doug Moglan, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. So now we would need. I'll ask for a motion to approve the transfer of the on premise restaurant liquor license.
I'll make a motion.
I'm gonna read the whole thing. To Point Grove LLC.
I will make a motion to approve the on premise liquor license to what you just said.
One ten.
Uh, one ten Point Grove Road LLC.
I will second the motion. We'll do a roll call vote for that as well. Doug Moglan, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Congratulations. Now you gotta do all this stuff with the state, but welcome to Southwick. Much success.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
And I, I want to also thank Mr. Lanning. I know you kind of had to step in when with the, I think you said untimely passing of your brother. Thank you for being a member of our community. I hope you still stick around and stay in around Southwick. And again, much success to you as the new owner operator.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Running about as on time as we usually are. Six ten PM. Yeah, you gotta leave it open. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Scudary representing South Pond Four Seasons Beach Association, Inc., first property line issues with Conservation. Um, I just, I, I mentioned it before the meeting started. We had one person, an interested party that wanted to be here tonight is out of the country. And I guess we can, we can kind of discuss this generally, but we're not gonna make any decisions on this tonight. We'll carry it to a future meeting to, to review it. Is that all right? Okay. You wanna come on up? Why don't we get everybody's names on the record while we're at it?
I'm Sandra Mifflin, Vice President, or President.
And I am Joseph Scudary, Vice President of the South Four Seasons Association. Basically, where it's to us is just, you know, the survey was done by the Department of Transportation on this property. Where the property line is supposed to be. So I don't see why, you know, we can go with the property line. I don't get it. I mean, it's a survey. I got paperwork that submitted to you guys. It was done on July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Because somebody claimed that mark, one of the markers that's by the water side was moved. So the DOT came in, didn't, did a survey. And there's nothing wrong with all the markers. There's three markers there. One, two, and three. One twenty-one, one twenty-two, and twenty-three. They're all in a straight line. So. If we run the strength from one twenty-two to one twenty-three brings me to the water edge. That's, that's a property. So Conservation made the property line a pile of rock that's actually in the association, the property. By move, by defining this property line and moving Miss Drury's boat ten feet over to the right. Who's our boat in front of our property?
In Connecticut.
In Connecticut. Our boat in front, it's right now, our boat is placed in front of our swimming area, which creates an hazard to us.
Which we only have fifty feet to begin with. You know, we have a boat ramp. We have a dock. We have a swimming area. What was seven twenty-eight, twenty-two? You mentioned, what was that? July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two?
July twenty-eight, twenty-two was when the survey was done, yes.
From the state.
The state of Connecticut.
Yeah, where they verified that the marker wasn't moved. It's been there since nineteen fifteen. Is there something in here? There is with that document?
Yeah.
One twenty-two, one. Oh, this deal for.
Yeah.
Here, okay.
Okay.
We have photos, you know, that shows the granite marker. That's been stationary since nineteen fifteen.
I'm not gonna ask, buddy, that would be mean.
That was mean.
What can you, what are we looking at here?
So this is, so this is the marker from Mass.
So yours, okay.
Their boat, this is where they put their boat and their dock. So this is our property here, the Massachusetts property.
Yeah.
Which we only have fifty feet. And then, so going to the west side of this, you have a concrete wall. And you have a boat ramp that's concrete. And then we have our dock, and then we once, we've always had a swimming area. Which with this boat being parked there, you can't comfortably do that or safely do that. And my understanding is Conservation, um, when we met with them in October last year. That they had asked her to move her boat as the order says, or the, their law is say twenty-five feet from property lines. And we were, we're not even asking for twenty-five feet. Even ten feet would be suffice. You know, just get your boat over to your side, to your Connecticut side. And we all belong to the same association. However, this has caused such a headache. That's such a simple thing to, to clarify.
We are giving, we are giving over ten feet over the property.
Yeah, it's like it's.
Okay, here's.
Not like, you know, we have to move a hundred feet. I'm right, this is it.
And we want to be safe. I mean, that's the purpose of pursuing this.
Here's what I propose. That we carry this to May twenty-eighth. I'll invite. Uh, and is, is it okay, where, is it all right for any one of the selectmen or, or select board members and the conservation to go here and just have a look at this?
I love it because when they did the walkthrough, we were in Florida. So we weren't able to be there.
Okay.
To explain. I mean, it's, and it's, it's not hard to see. It's not.
I'll run the strength from point A to point B when I get there.
I'd like to see it. And I'd also like to have the harbor master, because he, he's talked to me about this a little bit in generality. But I'd like to have a few of us go down there and just put eyes on it.
This sounds like.
Because I think there's been misleading here somewhere because the, um, town of Southfield did some drainage, drainage work for Nancy. And they dispersed the water through our association beach from underground. So that pile of rocks that was put there is a discharge pipe. And it has no bearing on a property line. And somehow it seems like.
I think that's the, and, and again, and I don't, I'm not, I'm trying to stitch three stories together. That's why we all get together. Is that the, the state of the inference here is that the state of Connecticut actually did work in the Commonwealth, which seems counterintuitive.
Absolutely.
When you think about it.
Absolutely.
So.
You know, but that's photo of the day.
Yeah, that's.
So to speak.
Until you have this going on, if she's using that as her property marker, then we have to correct that.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to have a look at this. I'd like to have a meeting where Conservation's represented. Um, Ms. Drury has the ability to be here, and the harbor master can all be here. And I believe the twenty-eighth is the confluence of that event. So we will schedule a time and let you know.
Yeah.
And if you could. Actually.
You know, actually.
Would you be so kind as to actually just let, does Lisa have a number for you to call? I just don't want to put it, I don't want to put it on the.
Yeah.
So I'll get it from Lisa. I just don't want to put it on the recording for the.
Oh, gotcha.
I'd like to add something to your paperwork. Like I said, survey was done on July twenty-eight. Was, uh, that was ended on August thirty-first.
Uh.
Okay. The work by Southfield. We start on July fifth. Okay.
Of twenty twenty-two.
Of twenty twenty-two. So they're a week apart. So a week apart, nobody moved this marker.
No, there's, yeah.
Use the paperwork from, uh, that I got from the town.
Plus, again, that's a whole separate issue anyway, having the town in Southfield work.
Yeah, that's, that's why, I think that's why everybody's a little bit looking at, just a little cross-eyed. It would seem kind of brazen of this.
Out of misleading information.
Our, our compadres over in Southfield that do work in the town of Southwick.
Yep.
So.
Is that a copy for us?
Is, can I have this or?
Yes, you can.
Yeah. I did meet up with, um, the selection of Southfield on this as well.
The first selectman?
Hmm.
First of all.
So like I said, they claimed that the marker was moved. They moved it in a week's time.
No, it's not moved. It's verified.
For these, can these stay with this, or do you want these back?
I'd like them back only because I, what those are doing is I have.
Okay.
If, do you need a copy of them? I can certainly do that.
When I come down there, oh, we'll take a look and use our phone.
Okay.
Is that all right?
For your time?
Thank you.
You have a great evening.
Sabrina, you got that? We'll let you know on the twenty-eighth. What time? We'll schedule that for.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if you're aware, but we already had a site visit with Diane Gann, Gale was there. The first selectman of Southfield. Landis was there. Um, myself and two other members of the Conservation Commission. We did have a site visit. And in that site visit, we weren't necessarily identifying property markers. We saw the drain. And the drain was going to be a marker, in which we decided, or the commission came up with um, a compromise for the neighbors. And that marker, um, was to basically signify that Ms. Drury's dock was to be, I believe it was ten feet to the east of that, uh, marker. And, um, the Four Seasons Association was to be twenty feet, twenty-four feet west of that marker. So the Conserva-, the Conservation Commission didn't agree on any property line because we're, we're not surveyors. Uh, but that was they're trying to come up with a compromise on the placement of the docks. So. If you guys still want someone, if you still want someone from Conservation there, we can be, and I think that would be more along the lines of was there work done actually in Massachusetts rather than Southfield? But as far as property markers, um, I don't know if that's necessarily our place. Does that make sense?
Probably not for Conservation.
Right.
Right? Because it's just water is really what they're concerned.
We want to place, uh, a dock on the property line. Property line can be, you know, we can prove where the property line is.
Yeah.
So. As Conservation says, the rock, I say, it's to the right of the rock. And I can prove that. So when we all get together. I mean, I'll.
Well, I guess, I, yeah, I, I hear.
We have to.
And so whether, and I didn't realize you'd already been there. So either.
We weren't able to be there, which was.
Well, myself and the Hyber Master or, or whoever wants to go down, we'll set some time up to come down and take another look at it. And the more eyes, the better. And then, um, we'll get together again on the twenty-eighth and.
Yeah, because it's got to be considered. The property line's got to be a part of this decision.
I think at some point, I mean, CT DOT is a, a survey. I, at some point, perhaps you may want to have a certain.
No.
And, and I don't know. I, I'll, I'll have to go through this and read it. I get it. On the twenty-eighth and figure it out.
Do you have access to the rest of that document? There's just some pages in here of it. Is there more to that? Do you have it? What else would you want? I don't know. I guess I'd like to see the entire context of the document, just not a couple of pages. Well, I don't think we did the drawings. I'm not, they came in black and white.
It's all documented, I think.
Of that whole thing?
See, that's, that's everything we got from this thing.
Which might be all of this.
There's nothing else.
Yeah, that's all the same stuff we have.
Okay, so you got the same thing I have.
This is from nineteen ninety-seven.
Not an entire report.
Yes, it is. We got this from the Department of Transportation.
All right.
I think we have correspondence, uh, email wise. Is that what you mean? From the person that surveyed? Is that? I, I guess this is a summary of something. What was the driver to get to this summary? And then is there a final determination? And I'll read it again. Um. I think that's the. She may not have anything. And, uh, we do have some people looking for some additional documentation in our own archives on this as well.
Okay. And when we reconvene on the twenty-eighth, we'll all compare notes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right. I was doing good. Six twenty. Acting Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, update on assessment.
So back when I was, uh, kind of asked to, can I help out and pick up here, when in, in this spot, one of Carl's um, missions for me was to take a look at this. Um, and as far as the merge and, and how it works and, you know, what's really going on, uh, for day-to-day activities within facilities and grounds, et cetera. So I put a little, little presentation together, so at least we get a review of it, um, some, some challenges, if it goes different directions, whatever. Uh, but it'll give you a perspective of what I've seen so far in the month, month and a half that, that, uh, we've, we've got it. Can I move this or do you have?
I think I have to.
Okay.
Well, you, you just give me the.
Okay.
A finger, but not that one. I'll turn the page, so.
So the, the facilities involved obviously are, you know, police, fire, town hall, DPW from the boat, um, the beach, the parks, uh, which is a little bit of separate that we've kind of cleaned up a little bit of that. Diane was at the, the meeting last week where we kind of approached some things that have been challenging. Um. There's a lot of facilities. Go ahead. Uh, we think of this position for the custodial services that are provided to all these facilities, but the job itself is a lot, lot more. And I have to admit getting into it, I did not realize the extent and the, the variety of things that are really going on in this position. Go ahead. So with all our buildings, there's over a hundred thousand square feet and just thirty-one restrooms alone that are taken care of each week. Um, about two hundred and thirty hours a week, hours weekly that are put to that, and eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand hours a year that are addressing maintenance issues of those, those buildings, our buildings. Go ahead. Uh, the current staff here now is one supervisor, department head, which I'm filling in as uh, trades, a tradesperson, a custodial supervisor, uh, clerical, facilitator, director, chum, all hats. Um, I have to say that, um, that position is a lot more involved than I thought. Um, the, the particular person, Hillary, has a, a handle on all the contracts, all the budgets, all the things that's going on. She's processing over probably sixty bills a month that are, are going through the, through the department from all the different buildings and all the different contracts. Um, and if it wasn't for that, I would have no idea what bill's going where. Um, and the same with Dan. Dan's great. As far as the tradesperson, I haven't found anything yet that he can't really approach. Um, there are certain things we don't want to approach that may have been done in the past. A, electrical. Uh, we had some issues going on in the, in the library that we had, we had to bring in Johnson's electric to fix, um. Again, when we met with Maya the other day with, with one of our meetings, that question was asked, what can I do? What can't I do? And there are certain things when it gets to electrical and some of the plumbing issues that you want a plumber a tradesperson doing it that's licensed because you have a liability issue. It's my old saying, we're not covering it. Uh, we have two full-time custodials and three part-time custodials. Um, all the mowing and snow removals on all our buildings are done through contract. We just, I think you just had that, the mowing contract come through. Uh, again, you know, they do a great job. Um, Town Common's a perfect example of how well of a job they do. And we got some other things we've been working on with him to clean up some code issues that were going on with, with mulch and things like that. Go ahead. The parks, again, Wally's twenty-five acres, Pifties, three acres, the rail trail, um. There was some question when I first came on here. You, I know there was the, the famous tree that fell on the park. I know there's the the tree that falls in the forest. Is anybody here? Well, everybody heard this one. Um. But there was some old language that was in some processes then which David was taking care of the, the, the ramifications of the tree coming down and the parks bringing, bringing people back up to speed on that they have this year. Um. Long story short, that's all I think been resolved at this point. They have to revisit it and come up with some, some things, but, uh, in the most part we work, we'll work hand in hand with whoever. Um, go ahead. Um. Under the park staffing, they have, they doing the, the mowing and Wally and the rail trail with three part timers. However, under maintenance, we, we're, our line item has a, um, cleaning there for the, for the restrooms and putting the trash out and whatnot. And right now the trash is being picked up by, by the, um.
The trash?
Yeah, no, they're, they're, they're doing it.
They're doing it.
Yeah. But I know Bobby's got some plans in, in the works, so. Go ahead. So when you look at the park, which is kind of that, that gray area we've tried to define, uh, managed by Buildings and Grounds would be the cleaning, maintenance, something breaks, preventative, if there's something preventative. But that's about to open up a little bit too, because we have rail trip, or not the rail trail, the, um, um, spray park coming that will need some sort of maintenance of some kind. Uh, we don't know how much yet, but it depends on surfaces and water and how it, if it clogs. You know, the spray units and all those types of things. So we don't, there's a lot of unknown on that. Under the, the parking wreck, they're managing the mowing, the field prep and, and sports support. And it's a lot, I think, I know you've been involved, Doug, with some, some, some of that last year or the year before. It's more than just mowing the fields. It's, there's a lot to it. There's a lot of challenges is marking, prepping, getting everything ready to provide that best sports facility that you can. So we're working hand in hand. We found some things in the playscape that we need to maintain. Uh, there could be big pictures down the road, but we're trying to minimize them and under maintenance and can fix what we can fix. So again, we'll, we'll work together. Go ahead. Area comparisons. So we looked at other towns. Go ahead. And they're all over the place. Agawam has one custodial per, per municipal building, including the schools. So they, they operate as the schools. They have a director, deputy director, administrative assistant, a senior clerk, and age eight tra- trades staff. And the mowing and snow is done by the DPW department. Go ahead. On East Hampton, you go to the other extreme, they only have two custodians for all the buildings. They don't have any repair staff, and they have minor mowing and custodial issues that they do. South Hally, again, a department head, a couple of office staff, four custodians, a couple of maintenance workers, DPW does the mowing and snow removal. And when you go to Belcher Town, they're under the DPW, they have a Buildings and Grounds Director, they have two clerical to maintenance for, for custodial. And again, they do the mowing and snow removal. And, you know, obviously with us, our mowing's contracted and our snow removals contracted as well. Go ahead. So the workflow, how things come to us, from us, et cetera. Go ahead. We're involved in, you name it, pretty much. From annual inspections, function setups, you know, a broken chair, painting something, fixing the floors. Uh, we really have touched a lot in the last, you know, in the last few, few months or a month or so that I've been here. Go ahead. Um. Basically, it kind of breaks down into two different things. Reactive, uh, something broke, something wore out, something's leaking. Uh, something happens, alarm issues, surprise of the trash. And then there's the predictive things for prevention with the contracts with, you know, the facilities, the HVAC, we're, we're managing those as well. Schedule maintenance, floors, daily duties, trash again, and, uh, facility setup and, and tear down. Go ahead. So everything comes through a program that they started, uh, called Operation Hero, um, and it really works well. So every department can log in, say, I got, I need a picture frame hung, I need a floor fixed, et cetera, et cetera. But it, any topic that can, they want to put in, it, it comes into, we all get the, when I say we all, myself, um, Hillary and Dan all get the notices of what's hot, so to speak. Um, because we do get some surprises with state inspections and all kinds of things like that. Go ahead. So this is one of their things. So since I've been here about a month, month and a half, we've touched a hundred and fifteen items. Uh, for the time. Uh, and just typically we run about fifteen are open at all times. And you can see a lot of it is event setups. I mean, we've been through a lot. We have also, we have the elections and we've had, you know, the town meetings. And we had Carl's function and we've had other things. Uh, but there's a lot of events, stuff that happens here, happens in the COA. They're involved in all that. So from fixing alarms or working with the alarm company to delivering Kleenex, it's all logged. It's all, it's all, uh, recorded. Good.
Okay.
Uh, so the facilities, again, it was a six, on the six buildings. That includes all the HVAC, all the alarms, burglar alarms, panic alarms. Safety code issues that come up, electrical issues that come up. We're monitoring twenty annual vendor contracts. That could be from, um, B and G uh, for one, for, uh, the building maintenance or building facilities, HVAC, the control systems. There's mo-, there's different contract, contracts for this building than there is for the fire department than there is for the, the library. Uh, all have different vendors, all have different, you know, pros and cons for whatever reason that they've been acquired over the years. Uh, but again, we need to do those. Um, we're interfacing with those vendors and we're obviously dealing with the repairs that go on within those things as well. Good. Trash. So currently, and that's, I know Bob is in the process of trying to work out something. We're spending six hours a week taking a tradesperson to go pick up trash on a Monday or a Thursday. So that takes him away from all the other projects. The other problem that's a challenge is that the trash you're getting isn't, um, is a challenge in that a lot of liquor, liquor bottles, other issues, you know, whether it be the lakes or whether it be the, the gorge, wherever it is. Um, the trash is not the best dog waste. You, you know, it's trash, but it's, it's of the extreme version. Uh, go to the next slide. This is a picture from last week, North Pond, uh, or the north, north end boat ramp, um, just, just from the boat ramp from that one week or so. So it can be monumental, um. Hopefully Bob can put together a program that will take care of this from all the, all the different entities that we have to pick up from. Uh, and we can move forward and go from there. So the current staff again is one department head, director, one head custodial supervisor, the tradesperson, two full-time, and the three part-time. Go ahead. When you break those out, your department head's doing forty hours, the two, um, custodial supervisor and tradesperson are doing forty. And then the custodians break down depending where they are, thirty-seven hours, thirty-six, eighteen, eight and eleven plus covers for vacations and events and, and all the other things. So, um, it's pretty lean, but very effective. I'm not, I'm sure this has been set up for years. But, you know, obviously, like, whether it be the police department, it's at night when no one's there. Here, uh, libraries in and out, that these, the, they all weave in and out and do their jobs, and they do them well. I've been in a lot of town halls, a lot of public facilities across the state, and I would rival this to any of them for the jobs that these folks do. Uh, go ahead. So right now, the Buildings and Grounds again is, uh, a director. You have a head custodial supervisor that's managing all those part-time hours and people move in and covering events and et cetera. And you have one tradesperson that's, you know, fixing things, doing things, carpenter, whatever. And then you got the part-time custodians that are, they're adding their, their thing. I guess what concerns me, go ahead, the program that was floated the other day with, with, uh, DPW, the next one. Is it takes the building and, um, supervisor and it, and the, the, um, the build, the director and the supervisor and kind of reduces their role. If you go to the, go to the next slide. So part of me, that's the challenges I see with the plan, is you're decreasing the staff responsibility to position. So the director, department. So the director, department head now goes to becoming a supervisor. And reports to the director. Right now, the director's reporting typically to the town administrator or, you know, Carl's position. So you're, you're reducing that to a supervisor level. The head custodial who's a supervisor gets reduced to a custodial in the, the other plan. Um, now we start to worry, now we start to have, do we have the uh, pay disparity? If we're falling under DPW, does the, does the pay rates change? Don't know. Do they need to join the union? That was something that was asked to me, is are we gonna have to unionize? Um, I know. This, some of this is a little premature in that the mowing and snow removal, you would need to add staff and equipment. I know Parks and Recs doesn't want to fall under this plan, they they express that interest. However, I don't know what the plan is for the rest of the facilities, but if you're gonna mow town hall and mow. Um, the library, you would need people to do that in equipment that doesn't exist today. Uh, as a layer of bureaucracy and decreasing the effectiveness. It really relocates the staff away from the operations center. This, this is the operations center for all of this. I would assume it would, because we're moving DPW under DPW, that all these folks would operate out of DPW. Which is taking them away from the hub really, where all our supplies are, our um, things come in and out, the setup, the setups are here. Reporting to another administrative layer complicates the decision tree as it relates to priorities, budgets, planning and decisions. Where you're, you're dealing with a lot of projects, a lot of things going on. If you're adding a layer of getting, if a supervisor has to get permission. To make sure the rugs get changed up this year or um, whatever, you know, pick a topic. Then it, then it becomes, I think, a challenge and adds, adds some frustration to it. Go ahead again. Um. I think the best way to look at this is buildings and grounds is kind of like Switzerland. Because if the library needs a, a something fixed and the fire department needs something fixed, they're both just as important to each other. Having a tree from having to go up to another department head to figure out if something's getting done, I don't think is is effective. I like the ground of everything being neutral and that person re- reports to the, whether it's the the uh. You know, Carl's position or whatever, but then. The importance can be weighed against the importance of whatever the topic is, not the department, so to speak. Go ahead. Um, upcoming projects, you know, it was mentioned the other night, if I was gonna have to clerk the spray park, I don't know, um. But again, those are things that are issues that are out there. Uh, we got waterproofing going on, possibly at town hall, that would be a big project. Um, the spray park, pickleball, town hall and Wally. We have green energy grants for HVAC and the P P D that will be replacing hopefully their um, all their boilers and whatnot. Those will be projects that'll have to be managed. We have an elevator grant replacing our elevator here. Town hall boiler gets replaced, we have ongoing upgrades. You have the office moves, you know, the, for moving the clerks and all that stuff to coordinate. There's a lot going on, uh, that's the last slide. Um, there's a lot going on in this position. So I would, if it's a road that officials want to go down, I think you really need to peel back the onion and look at every single level. Because a blanket statement to say we can just move this under there to to benefit people, I'm not sure it's gonna be effective. Um, and I think it would create some more challenges than what. Maybe we were thinking of originally, in in concept, it sounds good. I know Doug, you had mentioned about sharing people. Well, as far as I'm concerned, why can't we share people now? You know, it would not make it complicated. Um, but I think it's important for this position to stay, stay Switzerland. And be the server to all departments equally and prioritize their, their uh, their functions or their needs, whatever they may be. And uh, and move forward. Any questions, comments?
Um, all the different vendors that you have contracts with. Are they different because they're system-specific or they were just in place at some point in time, do you know?
Yes. Where the dartboard hit, I don't know. No, so. Historically, I mean, I think historically, there was, there's been a lot of work done in this facility. Both past and recently with the the recent HVAC. A different, a vendor was chosen that wasn't the tip, the vendor that was here before. So then they become responsible possibly for this, but but they're still in the news, new phase, so that could change again. Fire station and police station both have um, a vendor that we've used before. This you, this place got a control systems different than the other buildings because of the new going out the bid and whatnot. So yes, to some of that. Can you get past your warranty stages and and make them all the same? I would assume so, yeah.
At some point, they could all be under one.
Correct.
Envelope.
Yeah. Um, it it gets complicated because. The control systems is a big, big item. Um, it's. Computer uh, software that's dominant, it's them running it, it's them doing it. They have to talk to the, can, all the parts of the HVAC system and then. You know, it's okay, the part doesn't work and they're saying the control doesn't work. And I know Chief has gone through this experience. On a negative note of lately, um. So it's, it's frustrating because you're trying to make something as quick and efficient as possible, and then it's just layers and layers of different vendors. Uh, some of it you.
So you could have two or three of them on.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
One query and figuring out whose it is.
Yeah, you might have to go out the bid for it. Um, but. Art cleaned up some of that with some of our vendors. Um, I think like the, some of the, the fire extinguisher, the fire sprinkler, annual inspections, the alarm system inspections. Most of that, I think, is is gotten better. Um, and some of it's in transition to, so.
Jump in.
Well, I, I always talk first, I figured I would. For once, be quiet, you know, but first of all, I want to thank you for doing this and putting this together and adding the perspective. You know, I think we certainly have stimulated a conversation about how we're gonna look at this going forward. And you know, I had, you know, an idea and. Um, Mr. Brown had an idea, you have an idea. And I think we, you know, when we come back from after town meeting and things settle down a bit. Um, as well as having a new CAO, I think we could, we're gonna be in a position and and, you know, a reorganized board. Um, just have a conversation about how, you know, how to move this forward, because I think. From where, some of the things that we talked about, some of them have already been addressed. By the way, I'm very impressed with what you're doing over there so far. Thank you very much.
I'm not staying.
No, exactly, communicated exactly what's going on and what, you know, where we need to go. And you're right, there is a lot of upcoming projects too that. Um, you know, our previous clerk of the works is relocated. I don't know what his appetite is to do any of this remote or how you could do any of this remote, probably not, right?
I mean, it's okay for some of the contract language stuff, but you know, um, you know, we're back and forth every week, stuff.
Sure.
Um, I think, um. Yeah, I'm I'm not sure, you know, the, one thing, I I gave you a copy of that and I also gave you a copy of a job description that I found, um. That, that, you know, there's some different things. They have town manager, they have a a permanent building committee that they, that person answers to. But I think it really gives a really good perspective of what's involved in the position.
Yeah.
Um, I'm only doing fifteen hours a week. I, I could be spending forty easily. And never touch a tool or never touch a thing. I don't know if the DPW director has that time to absorb. If, you know, for a department head level, when you're making budget decisions, long-range decisions, arguing with vendors and and all that good stuff. So.
And I agree, I think you bring an excellent point of, you know, how can we better utilize the re- maybe the answer is to better utilize the resources we have. Rather than moving this in order to do that, maybe it can be done, but I think we just gotta have the conversation. Um. And I think the key, part of the key of all this has been and always will be communication, right? If if a department head or or somebody logs, we'll call it, log a ticket of something that needs to get done, whether it's painting a room or fixing a chair. And it, we can communicate back and forth as to where something is in the queue of getting it done, understanding that, you know. Somebody needs a room painted, great, but there's a water leak and that takes us away for a day. That's understandable, but at least you understand where things are in queue and and that was a, yeah. You know, and how things get prioritized and that that's communicated outwardly to those who have a stake in it, I think it's just so important.
Russ just introduced that system to them at their park and rec meeting and it was like, wow, eye-opening and.
They didn't know, yeah.
And they really want to embrace that. That's, that's critical.
And that, and parking wreck's a little bit of a. Learning that it's a little bit of a, uh, I don't know what the right word is, but you know, they're responsible, they they, they're knee-deep in it. They're, they, they have pride in the park, which are all positive things. Who does what just has to be determined, that's all. And it, unfortunately, it may get too big for them at some point to do it through volunteers and. And friends and they need something that's more of a point person over there. Personally, I think they could use one now, but.
We don't disagree. We don't disagree. And you know, I think the, one of the differences, and I talked about it a little bit last week. And, you know, the, between the general idea that I kind of laid out verbally, I didn't come in with a whole PowerPoint, but. Um, but and Randy came in with a one-pager, is I don't have park and rec under DPW. I have buildings and grounds, which encompasses a lot of the work of some of the maintenance and work at the facilities. And this year, we moved those part-timers back to park and rec. Last year, those were under buildings and grounds and we, we didn't. No one was really thrilled with how that all worked out. So we're gonna try something different this year and we're gonna keep working at it till we get it.
It's like, we repainted the bathrooms under, you know, under this umbrella, we re- uh. Passing some sinks back on, some vandalism issues. We found some things, you know, the, probably gonna be mulching and doing some other things. Um, sharing equipment, um, it's.
I, I think what might be shaking out here a little bit is some of the tasks are equipment-driven. Not necessarily a departmental organization.
Could be, yeah.
Driver. And and maybe you look at what's the equipment needed, who's got it, make them responsible.
Could be, yeah, I mean, it it's a moving target, that's the problem, because today you think you got the answer, then tomorrow you need a project here and you need a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Um, I think that part of. I think that part of an attitude can be driven from management, top management of sharing things.
Yeah, yeah.
Not necessarily needing a structure to do it.
Correct. And and I, I also, I do wanna, um. One hundred percent agree with you. I've also been into a bunch of public facilities and. Um, you know, this facility here, you know, our, our old town hall, yeah, needs work. But it's a beautiful facility and it's very well-used. You know, we just had the art show here as one event. We've had other functions and events here. It's great for our meetings, other groups that utilize the town hall for other things. It it's such a beautiful and well-run facility and, you know, hats off to the maintenance staff for what they have to do.
Great job.
I, I know I was talking to Hillary last week because she was doing a dry run of some things she was doing for the steps, just to make.
Oh, yeah.
That was great, right? And I'm like, okay, great. And, you know, we all walk up and down the stairs and don't give it a second thought until they weren't, right? And then you notice it, right? So probably so much of what we, we maybe even take a little bit for granted, um, is is due credit to them. Um, and you know, Wally Park looks great. I'd love to know the acreage of the linear park someday, that'll be an easy, the math thing to figure out. The rail.
Oh, the rail.
The linear park, right? I mean, it's, it's ginormous as a task, right, for someone to mow and keep up. And never mind the trees that fall when no one's looking, right? And but everything else, it's a, it's a large piece of property if you were to square it up, it's huge.
Yeah.
Um, and the town beach and, you know, the fire station, police station, twenty-four seven operations with, and at the. You know, the fire department where folks are actually, you know, practically, well, not just practically, actually living there now, you know, and.
They, they look great. I, I know, I'm sure Rich has had it, I've had it, Chiefs come and go, this building's twenty, twenty-five years old.
Absolutely. You wouldn't know it by looking at it.
You guys are getting old.
We're not going back to those markers.
We're recording, buddy.
But, you know, point taken. So, you know, obviously, when we come back from after town meeting this and and we have the new CAO seated and and as be, you know, have a. A a stake in the discussion and, and where to go from there, but you know. I was just really, I'm really looking to bring ideas forward to try to see how we can. You know, we were in a period, we're in a period of transition in this role. And so rather than, if we were gonna do something, I wouldn't want to hire someone and then say, okay. Now your role's changing and you're, you know.
Yeah, you want to be sure.
Absolutely. So.
And and she might have ideas that.
Absolutely.
Our experiences as well.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, you got more to do though.
Put it through heroes.
Put in a ticket. That's, okay. Let's knock out some business and then we can, um. We're gonna acknowledge payroll warrant number two, four, two, three dated May seventh, the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Approve open session meeting minutes from April twenty-ninth. Can we do an omnibus motion for April twenty-ninth, May second and May sixth?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for four twenty-nine with one correction typo and five-two and five-six.
I'll second the motion. Doug Moglan, aye.
Van Gaal, aye.
And executive session minutes from five, six. By the way, thank you for pitching in tonight, I appreciate it.
I did decent, right detail, they make it condensed, but these were. My, my own minutes from exec. So I, I'll make a motion to accept these when they're ready.
I'll second the motion. Doug Moglan, aye.
Van Gaal, aye.
Okay, uh, this event is coming up on June twenty-ninth and October fourth. Uh, they're both for the Southwick Inn. Uh, I previously mentioned that, um. I tend not to get involved with anything to do with the Southwick Inn. Uh, last year, a member of this board asked that I step aside for that. Topic. Uh, so given that there's not a time pressure here, I'm going to put these aside to our next meeting, which will be. Uh, the twenty-eighth of May. If you guys happen to have a consent agenda meeting, I will not be at the meeting next week. If there, there is no scheduled meeting next week, if there is a consent agenda meeting for the. The week of town meeting, um, you guys are sure and more than welcome to do it, but I'd rather have a full board here to take that on. We have a request from the fire chief. Lucky I'll see he's here.
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm well. So I had sent over, um, just a letter of request. We're looking at increasing the stipends that we currently pay for our per diem EMTs. And paramedics. Um, the history of this position is that when Southwick was a volunteer department. We um, had a stipend for EMTs that were on duty at night. And so when we moved to twenty-fours, we maintained per diems. Um, working to kind of fill in during the staffing. So. It's, it's been a position that's always been part of the department. The rates have changed to be competitive and that's basically what this is, is a competitive adjustment. Um, some of the other departments around us are starting to model their staffing after Southwick. But, you know, we want to stay competitive and keep the people we have. In order to do that, obviously, the the wages need to be uh, in line with everybody else. We offer a lot of other things and that some of the departments can't. Um, and then, you know, the size of the department, call volume, um, obviously, the accommodations, the equipment that we use, all those things. Um, so that's, and it's a stipend, it's still a twelve-hour stipend, uh, like it initially was. And we like to keep it a stipend, even though it is adjusted, if there's not a full shift or a partial shift or something like that. Um. The per diems helped us immensely get to the paramedic level. Without them, we probably would have never been able to do it because we just didn't have the staff to get the coverage. So we still rely on them. Pretty heavily, um, for for support. So going forward, uh, just a small increase in the BLS side. Uh, we still see, um, several people come to us as basic providers because it's a first opportunity for them to. Kind of get exposure to fire EMS at the same time. And for, most of the paramedic come to us are from other agencies. That are just looking for a part-time gig type of thing. Um, and we have been very fortunate in that we've had. People that we have hired as per diems could now work for us full-time.
The three additional firefighters that you hope to add, are they going to be full-time? They'll be full-time firefighters, correct?
Correct. So the three, that if if approved, we would look to hire three more full-time people. Um, we want to maintain the relationship with the per diems because it definitely helps us out. So the money's in the, in the budget. Um, budget-wise, uh, this is only a forecasted based on an average number of uh, shifts that have been filled. For twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal, the past fiscal year, but it's, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four. It's hard to get a full measure on this year because it's not over yet, so it was a week's average and in line with what we've seen in the past. And again, this is one of the bu- budget items that may rolls around, there's no more muddy for per diem. May rolls around, there's no more muddy for per diems, we just close the schedule and we wait for July to roll around. It's, you know, it's it serves a purpose. It's not a critical operation of the fire department, but we are staffed. Uh, our staffing model includes the per diems, so we'd like to keep them there as much as 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 long as we possibly can. And I think. The current budget for for fiscal twenty-five would help us do that all the way through uh to the end of the year as well.
This hadn't been increased since twenty twenty-one here.
That's correct. Yeah, and that was when we, uh, twenty twenty-one, we added some staffing, but we still weren't twenty-four yet. All of that kind of happened in about an eighteen-month period, but not on a real calendar date of any sorts.
Okay. The. Paramedic is a little bit heavier than the. The M Ts.
Mm-hmm.
Is that by design?
Yeah, always. So, oh, you, are you talking specifically the the separation?
Absolutely. Looking for for the increases a little bit. If I ladder an increase at two and a half, two and a half.
Yeah.
Your E M T is right there.
We started low on the paramedics and we're lucky we got the people we got. This is an industry adjustment, yeah.
Yep, okay. Okay. That's the end of my questions.
You want to take this under advisement or would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to accept these increases to the per diem rates.
Will they fit within your budget for upcoming? I'll second the motion. Doug Moglan, I.
Thank you, I.
Thank you.
Always got the answers for me. Thank you.
I try.
Okay, the next item is. Approve and authorize the chair to sign change orders seven fifteen for the Snowhoods material and labor change. Order fourteen was already signed, but is for a clerical error.
I'll make a motion for you to sign those changes first.
Uh, second, Doug Moglan, I.
Thank you, I.
Uh, next item, and I'd like to correct a typo on the agenda. We need to acknowledge with deep regret, though he's aging out, um, but and congratulate. Um. Jeremiah Kane, um, as a reserve officer, he's been a reserve officer for a very long time. I'm not even sure how many years and I wish Chief Landis was here to tell me exactly how many years, but it's a lot. Um, super nice guy, did a great job for the town. Um, last year when we were down. A good chunk of the force due to injury, um. Reserve officer Kane stepped up and took quite a few shifts. Uh, and he's done that through the years and often see him around working details as well. Um, just a really good guy and I, you know, I want to extend my uh thanks and congratulations for his service. Uh, to the town, but we do need to acknowledge his resignation. Um, to the town. Next, acknowledge resignation of. Dawn Angel. As kennel staff for the Southwick Animal Shelter. Also, she's done a great job for us. I want to thank her. And we've acknowledged her resignation. Um, quick new business. We don't have a ton of new business. Uh, it's generally tradition. We don't open new business um. This close to an election in town meeting. Uh, review and authorize chair to sign Stanic. Stan Tech and Solitude Hydrala contract for lake management. So this was had been vetted by L M C and Mr. Brunells. So I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign the contract.
Make that motion.
Second. By Doug Moglan, uh, roll call vote, Doug Moglan, I.
Thank you, I.
And in the big financial news of the day. Um, a Mr. Thompson is looking to receive an abatement on his sewer bill due to a broken water heater. Um, he's requesting an abatement of ninety-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, equivalent to eight thousand and twenty-four gallons and. The D P W feels a reasonable compromise here is forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. And if I recall, I think I saw an email on this, this is one of the few users. That is on sewer and not water, if I'm not mistaken. So that's why there's a. Um, a sewer abatement, not a water bait, I believe. I could be wrong about that, but that's what I thought my email said. Um. So I would need a motion to approve. Uh, and abatement and the D P W recommendation is forty-five dollars and sixty-eight. Their request is for ninety-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Uh, make a motion to approve the abatement for forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents as recommended.
I will second the motion. Doug Moglan, I.
Thank you, I.
And I believe there's a book we have to sign on the way out. It's like a little leather bound book. If I recall, it's it's a old school book. Okay. All right. Um, we're gonna quickly run through some of the old business. I only have one item that I want to cover tonight. Um, unless there's anything else we need to come go over. Um, and that is, and because it is kind of timely, is that, um, you were sent. From the high-speed internet subcommittee, sent back to this board. Um, the intergovernmental agreement fiber networking, engineering, design and poll administration between the town of Southwick. And Westfield Gas and Electric Light Department, City of Westfield, D B A, Whip City Fiber. This has now been reviewed by our town council and sent back with uh minor edits from our town council. Um, but I would entertain a motion. Um, and I, as the chair of of the high speed, I wanted the board to review this. Um. And sign it. But we're 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 up against it on on time here. So now the town council has completed their review. Um, I'm comfortable with it. I've reviewed it myself and then I reviewed it with the high-speed internet. Who voted to send it to the select board for their signature. So happy to answer any questions or entertain a motion to. Have the select board uh execute this agreement.
I'm like, I read it extensively in drafts. I sat through your draft review of it. I read the final and compared it all. I'm good with it. I'll make a motion for the select board to sign off on this and get it going.
Okay, and absent the vice chair, I will second the motion. I will call for a roll call vote. Doug Moglan, I.
Thank you, I.
And uh, that's a monumental step, folks, for our. Um, Southwick Municipal Fiber Network. Um, because that executes the first, once we sign it, that executes our first contract. So. We're finally on our way. A year from, almost a year to the week from the last town meeting, but it's moving. Um. Notes, we are not supposed to meet next week. We are meeting, the select board is scheduled to meet on the, the next meeting would be the twenty-eighth of May. Which is a Tuesday. I don't want anyone to be surprised that we're meeting on a Tuesday. We're not meeting because on that Monday, because it is a holiday. It is Memorial Day. Memorial Day Parade, ten o'clock, I believe, steps off from in front of Summer House down to the green. And then there's a another additional ceremony down at the new cemetery after a brief stop at the old cer- uh cemetery. Um. Today is uh the day before Election Day. Um. Everyone who's on the ballot, I wish them much success and much luck. And, you know, thank you for, for those who are are putting themselves out for. For election and standing for election to serve the town, um, much appreciated and, um. That's all I'm gonna really say about that, but, um. That's all I had. Do you have anything else to add before we close tonight?
Appointments, um, everybody we had submit either email or letter. I entered them all. Everybody's up to date.
We need to add one committee to that list. But we have to resolve it, but we need to add the M P.
Yes. Waiting on a decision on that.
Yes.
True. So there's a couple that can be scheduled whenever we want to schedule them.
Well, technically, the 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 by the protocol. June first, the town clerk delivers to us the list of appointments that are terms that are expiring and vacancies.
Yep.
And then we, we start to schedule from there because all the terms end June thirtieth. So hopefully we can be in good shape to roll through July into August, but.
I I did a pre-check. Everything was in order on that.
Fantastic.
Lastly, I just want to remind you the due date for the, any interested marijuana retail applicants is June seventh. And.
June seventh, that's a Friday.
That's the, that's the deadline for submission. And then we'll have to figure out how we're going to need to address those. And include them.
Okay, and also on the twenty-eighth, we have, um. Scheduled for interviews for lieutenant, correct?
Yep.
So that's gonna, so pack a lunch.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything else before we adjourn for this term? Sir.
So you have the Carl Steiner Memorial Roof. Since you were a huge part of the internet, will it be the Doug Moglen Memorial Pole somewhere?
I I believe it's an honorary roof, but we can't call it a memorial roof because um he's still ambulatory. So, and I'm hoping that I see this and it's not the Moglen Memorial Anything, thank you, but no.
The first connection could be gilded or something, you know.
I'm just glad, no, please, for the love of God, it will not be. I don't want anyone ever to, geez. But no, I think, you know, it it's a huge step for the town to to move this along. Um. What everyone's telling me is that the pole work is taking forever by the Ever sources and Verizon to move their stuff. And uh, Xfinity is in no hurry to move their stuff either for, to make way for a competitive service, so. They were still a long way from lighting up a lot of stuff, but we've identified the fiber service areas. We've identified the equipment. We think we know where the hut's gonna go. And some other stuff like that, but now we can start to to do some work. And as um previously stated, I see Andrew's online because he he brought this to my attention. Um, from July first, there'll be a a full budget accounting. Um. For all of those funds as they're as they're expended, you know, because we, there's a significant amount of money here.
There is.
Um, and it deserves a full and proper accounting. Well, you know, all right now, it's been relatively small checks for permitting for this and permitting for this and forming the. The um municipal utility, but now, now the real work starts. So, and the high-speed internet group is also working on on some financial modeling. Um, that's a subcommittee of that group to come back and look at number of ratepayers, rates. Income against the debt to make sure that that math still works. One hundred percent. Because the, frankly, the poll costs are quite high. There there are even more than we anticipated. And they've they've more than doubled since we started this project. Even based on the old numbers, so they've doubled. So anyway, that's what we're.
We own zero poles, correct?
We own zero, well, darn near close to zero poles, I believe. Verizon owns eighty percent, Ever Source is in the twenty percent. Um, in West Springfield, it's the opposite and Ever Source has just gone mad with their costing of poles. And part of this contract is to have Whip City be our advocate, you know, so when they come across a sixty-year-old pole. And they say, well, you should replace it because it needs to be taller. We can go, it's sixty-year-old, you replace it. It's due to be replaced anyway, that kind of thing. Anyway, with that being said, I entertain. A motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
I'll second the motion. All in favor? I, thank you very much.